Okay, I will. Where am I here? Call to order. Tuesday, September 28th, uh, regular city council meeting or special meeting, sorry. That approval of the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Figure since we have two, one would be a second.
Safe.
Sorry. We will go straight to our public comment. We have two people who have signed up. And I'll ask for hands either. So let's start with Jan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, Jan.
Hi, so I'm Jan Seber Ormond and this letter is also from my husband Wes Ormond. The Box 778, Cannon Beach, Oregon, 97110. Dear Mayor and City Councilors, Regarding the citing of a new Cannon Beach City Hall. Although we do not support the prepared food tax at this time, due to the ongoing pandemic and the extra stresses it puts on our local restaurants. And although there is still a lot of discussion to be had as to the size, number of buildings, design alternatives, etc. Of a new city hall and the possible inclusion of a police station and emergency operations center. We are heartened to hear that you and our Cannon Beach City employees now seem to favor locating a new city hall when the time is right. Where our present one stands on Gower Street. We support our Cannon Beach Fire District and look forward to exploring solutions to help fund their necessary operations. If the prepared food tax does not pass. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have David T.
Can you hear me?
Hello, Jan. Thank you.
Okay, I'm in Portland again, so. Anyway, okay, I just heard what Jan said and, and um, I don't know how people think we're gonna pay for this, but anyway. So build back better is my theme. City Hall, Police Station, and EOC. And I am worried as I looked at the map of the sub- subduction zone earthquake. And what if that happens? And what happens, uh, in the worst case scenario of that? Um, are we thinking that's not gonna happen? Um, and that's one concern. Um, I think we need to look into the future for 50 years and have an energy efficient platinum certified sustainable buildings that are carbon neutral for climate change. I think we need a healthy work environment for city employees with alpha filtration systems. I think that city employees work for the residents and the residents should be caring about their employees. I was looking at back at March of 2020 when we were talking about this. And, uh, the city hall has 30 employees with one bathroom. The police are using the bathroom to make coffee. Um, there's bug, uh, critters in the, in the attics. Um, the place is about to fall down and this has been kicked down the road for 30 years already and we're talking about kicking it down the road by we make more decisions. Um, that is like, what she just said is a nightmare to me. It's like, really, how about accelerate actions? Smart solutions. Um, create the cash and create the cash by, um, food tax, paid parking, property taxes, whatever it takes to make this city match. This is the one most beautiful places in the world. Now I've been to the wonders of the world, most of them. I've been up and down coastlines. This place is like Crater Lake, Timberline Lodge, Columbia Gorge and Cannon Beach. That's where we just sent visitors. So we have to get into perspective that we are living in one of the most beautiful places in the world. And that tourism is only gonna increase with time. And we should do a facility that is as beautiful as Cannon Beach. And I wouldn't be, uh, holding that back another day. Um, the, the restaurants have another till next July to get their act together. And all they have to do is get square, which causes costs, most of them have POS system. So there's no excuse for that either. They have plenty of time. Um, my business went under with the COVID really bad and now it's back big time. Retail's back, restaurants are back. Um. You have to think outside the box. Anyway. Tsunami zone protected with vertical evacuations. Are people gonna climb stairs? Uh, what if there is this bad earthquake? Um, otherwise I see it as irresponsible with future generations could have to rebuild again. Um. So police quarters and EOC above the tsunami zone. Um, the building is going to last for decades and will our future generations be cussing us or thanking us? Um, I think we should make the right decisions now and not let money hold us back. Um, we have the TLT, we have property taxes, we have infrastructure grants that probably hopefully will happen. Um, anyway, that is, uh, my kind of input. I just want everybody to think about Cannon Beach. And whatever we do should be as beautiful as Cannon Beach. Because it, it deserves to the best and the employees deserve the best. And the police and fire are elevated to hero status in my mind. So that's, that's how I see it. Thank you so much, you guys. I'm so sorry you have to make all these decisions with so many different opinions everywhere. That is not easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, there's nobody else, so. Want to raise their hand, which would be Betsy. So, okay, we'll move on. To our item. Bruce, do you wanna start?
Um, my introduction is just to introduce Emily Metas. It's been, um, monitoring the, uh, the information that we've been, uh, suggesting council to consider. And so, um, I'll turn it over to Ashley. Let's, yeah, turn it over to Ashley now. Or not Ashley, Emily. All right, Emily.
No problem. Thanks, Bruce. So, um, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, staff has put together some information in the form of two flyers that reflects their understanding of the city's plans for a new city hall and police station. Um, because the city intends to use funds from the prepared food tax if it passes. Um, city staff has involved me and asked me to review the flyers and I have. Um, before staff issues the flyers, um, they want to be sure that the information in them accurately represents councils intent on the city hall and police station facility. Um, so that's what we're here tonight doing. Um, if you do decide to finalize the text, the next step that I recommend going through, and Bruce and I have talked about this, is to submit the information to the Secretary of State for their approval to send it to all city residents. So I, that's all I have to, as prepared comments, um, I we can open up a discussion about the text, if that's appropriate.
Yep, it is. Has everybody seen the texts that we're referring to?
Uh, not all, but I have read something.
This is the one that we got through.
Be tightened up considerably. Um, he seems very wordy to me. I mean, he can say the exactly the same things you're saying and just tighten it up. Um. I guess my other question is, what, how do you plan to use this?
Um. I don't think that I plan to use it. Um, we had a discussion that, you know, you were, folks were seeming to be closer to making some decisions on city hall. We're having this meeting tonight. Um, I had said that I could, you know, put together a flyer for it, which I've done. And then there was also uh, conversations that people were having saying that, well, um, the city isn't saying what we're gonna do. And so that was the nexus with the one that says prepared food tax discussion. So at this point, it is, um, yours to edit. And decide if you want to use or to not use. Uh, there's one more piece. And I don't know what you'll do with the language. Um, we, we, this does fit into a, like a tri-fold or bi-fold flyer. So do one side of a, um, the, the paper. And the other side can say something. Um, and you know, we can have pictures, we can have whatever. So we do want some suggestions on that. Um. Because it's kind of the, the thing you see first. And I wanted to make sure that any ideas that were put out there that, um, Emily had a chance to, uh, talk about those. So this is a product, factual information that, uh, I'd said that something could happen and went ahead and made it happen. And, um, when you're talking about editing, um, Emily, what, five times back and forth? Yeah, we, and mostly because.
Considerably though.
No, I know. Well, uh, most of it was trying to make sure that we didn't have something in there that could be, you know, from interpretation standpoint. And, um, uh, yeah, there, this fits. And, um, there are some things that, you know, got kicked around, but, uh, I felt there was a reason to have some of them in. But you are the master editor. No, you have competition now with Emily.
What's, what's that?
You have competition with master editor Emily.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I, you can say exactly the same thing and leave the sentences just as they are. They can just be tightened up. I can see lots of places where they can just be tightened up.
And you certainly have a skill set to do it and it is a, ultimately it's a council project.
Okay, um. I know that you haven't been involved with the support committee because you're not allowed to be involved in the support committee and, and that's good. There's been a separation.
Yes.
But are you aware that the support committee has said is developing flyers as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so they've got about five, I think, flyers. And at least one or two are gonna be mailed out. So I don't know how necessarily in with, and obviously it's not going to do what you're doing.
There's no intention of trying, no intention of trying to coordinate.
No.
Now, we could just ask you, it's a city to provide the facts that we can use in, in our. And I would think that the, uh, the committee could, uh, look through this and make sure that they're not in conflict or stating inaccuracies. Uh, I would feel. I haven't seen what they put together, so I'm not as comfortable with that. I'm very comfortable with what's here. Uh, the information I think is appropriate. I would be also very comfortable with, ask Nancy to run her magic wand over. No, she's good. And, and tighten it up, would you say? And then ask Emily to make sure we, in the tightening, we didn't change interpretation or, uh, view of this. Because this is what city staff is providing information to the council. Now, it may be sufficient, but this is all we need from the city staff. And Emily's reviewed that. And it would be, I think, appropriate for the council to take this information. You know, the, the council doesn't have those same limitations on whether we're promoting or not. Well, I don't know, Emily, if, if, if the council were to take this information and then do some editing, then if anything went out to the, to the, uh, to the citizens, it would have to be clearly identified that's coming out from the council, not from city staff. Is that correct?
Let me make sure I understand your question. The, if the council added information to what we have currently, then could the council promote it as long as it was from the council? Is that your question?
Yeah, and I'm not proposing that we add information. I'm just saying that, because I like what's here. If we just did the editing and it somehow changed the emphasis that looked more like promotion, as long as it's coming from the council, my understanding is that's okay. But Bruce, it says something about we would send it out to all the post office boxes. So let me ask clarification. Were you thinking the city would send out this information packet from the city? Or buy this information to the council for the council to send out to the citizens?
Yeah, for the council to, to send out.
Okay, so you've just provided this to council in response to us asking for a back sheet from the cities, from the staff.
There's, there's a couple of iterations there. Um, and I've not had the chance to talk to Emily about, about this. But if we were to stay with this language and, uh, council was to suggest a cover. Um, no, 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 the, the council will have to go ahead and make arrangements. That wouldn't, that would, that wouldn't work. I'm sorry. I started down the wrong tree. Down a tree?
So Emily, as, as you've worked with Bruce, what has been your understanding of what happens to this document after the state has said it's fine?
So, yeah, it was my understanding that the city would, uh, send this out to mailboxes and that would be okay. Um, that was my understanding. If council were to add language related to a political position, then it would not be appropriate for the city to send the, this information out.
I don't, I don't think that's our intent, Adam.
No, not the intent.
Not mine.
Well, I, I would feel comfortable with. I guess I do like the idea of Nancy kind of tightening it up. I don't think it's gonna add a lot or reduce the amount of words a lot. But good at making it very clear, understanding. And if that then passes your muster, Emily, and you give Bruce the, the go ahead, then we should send that to the state for clearance. And then I'm, I'm just fine with the city sending out this information. As an information only, not a promotion. Uh huh. And then we have the ad hoc committee of citizens that are putting together, apparently a number of different flyers. And we don't have any ability to check that unless.
I mean, I've, I've looked at their flyers and made suggestions.
Yeah.
Um. And they haven't, haven't necessarily been taken, but you know, I've made, made suggestions. And they, the flyers are pretty much done.
Yeah.
And I think that, um, at least a couple of them are being sent out um, by, by the time the ballots arrive in the post office process. So I don't, I don't know where this particular piece. I don't, I don't know. Maybe the other counselors have an idea of how they want to use it. I don't know. I don't right now, no.
I'm certainly supportive of it being mailed to our, um, citizens. Um, at the very least, I'd like to see it posted on the website. That's what Newport has done. A letter very similar to this, and with, of course, their, their reasoning for wanting the, the prepared food tax. So it's tailored to them, but I, I believe that the more information that we can get out, the better.
Is there a time constraint other than the election itself? How soon do we have to get this to the state secretary of state or whoever reviews it?
So, um, I would recommend as soon as possible. Um, I, I do not have direct experience with clearing documents like this for, uh, with the secretary of state's office, but I've talked to people who have and they said that it can take a little time. Um, so, I, I mean, I think in the past I've heard a week or even 10 days or more. So I would, Bruce and I have talked about this. I would recommend just as soon as possible.
Another, I'm talking about, um, are there any milestones or something? The, we, we set the date to try to get this, or we anticipate trying to get it in about the 10th. Because the 13th is the day that the ballots are mailed out. And, uh, we lose effectiveness every day after that. As far as, you know, letting people know it's gonna be coming.
They're only taking a couple hours at the most, the very most to edit both of those.
Remember whose work you're editing.
What's that?
It's my work, so it might take you longer.
So easy to do.
Right.
Uh, one of the things that I'd like to see taken out is, um, that the city manager would be happy to provide, uh, tours. I don't think that that's a good idea with this.
Um, how come?
Uh, because I think it could end up being impartial, the tour. And everyone has had a chance to have a tour before now. And I just think to keep the slate clean, um, that that piece should be taken out. I also have two lines, but if Nancy's gonna go over them, uh, she probably has already seen them. One is, um, on the last, um, paragraph, uh, a great deal of information has been developed in bringing the project this and it take this out. And then on the second one, um, when you're looking at the fire, uh, department, it's the next to the last bullet. And, um, ensure that the vehicle replacement program is funded without having to go to the voters forever. It should be every.
And then there's a dollar sign in there.
Yeah.
Fine, I can respond to, uh, Councilor Wiesley. The reason that I put in the, um, the tours. Um, I think they would be factual. I mean, when you show people that the roof is holding up this wall, that we have several places that we've, you know, jacked up the roof. Um, and then to walk through the police station and see the conditions they're working in.
Um, yeah, I, I don't agree with you.
Okay, well, I wasn't quite finished. I think that some of the, the, first of all, I don't see where there's a problem to, uh, provide our folks with factual information and if they want to come in and see, they can come in and see. Uh, I don't know what the reason would be to not allow that to happen. And there's an awful lot of misinformation out there. That, um, I think if people were to see some of the physical conditions, those kind of things, that, um, it might let them rethink what.
I know what you're saying, but I still don't think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I think it would be a good idea because I've seen so many people say, boy, once I walked through there and saw with my own eyes the situation, it changed my mind. I became a believer.
I'm thinking of Bruce and, and protecting him from having an issue come up.
Well, that's commendable, but I think it's.
I disagree with.
I know.
Hold on on that. I think it's important. I don't know how many people have taken advantage of it. You can say everybody had that opportunity. But if this goes out to everybody's mailbox, there are gonna be people that never knew that they'd had a chance to visit the fire station or the police department. So that's my view of it.
Robin, I appreciate you looking out for me. Yeah, and I, I, this is kind of a new, uh, twist on this, but I kind of agree with Robin's take on it because not that I don't think you couldn't present it in a actual manner. It's how it can be taken, that per se perspective of what somebody, he personally, that's, that's a dicey thing. The other thing that I'm thinking about is we have several instances. I couldn't find one right this second, talking. But, um, I know we have several instances where we've talked about city hall and we have the presentation that literally says, come take a tour. So it wouldn't be, you know, hard to just find it on here and, you know, make it a separate instance that you can still come and take a tour, not put it in that document.
Hmm.
Um, just on the safe side. Um, so that's, that's, I understand the, the concern. The other, wait a minute, last part was. The other part is, I agree, I was, I was messing with this after I received it and did a lot of editing, playing around with it and I realized, man. Um. As I recall our discussion from the last meeting, this started out as bullet points for, uh, the facts so that we would have uh, continuity with facts. Um, from the city's present, presentation side. This has several, um, I would have weighed it less on the top end and more on what we intend to do with city hall. Just because that seems to be a big bugaboo that I'm hearing is, um, how that process happens. So that's, that's the part that I find I'm discussing the most. When people are, come in and talk about it. Otherwise, um, my only other concern with some of the facts is every time you state very hard numbers.
Hmm.
Don't hit those hard numbers, either we're low or we're high. That's ammunition for the fact that we did it wrong. So I would avoid the hard numbers as much as possible. Um, and just kind of do some ranges. Example would be, uh, Cannon Beach Rural Area Brexford District and City Hall are going to score 870,000 each entity. I just range that because we don't know for sure. We've got a really good idea. We've got a really good presentation, but nobody believes those, so there you go.
See if I can respond to that. I might have misunderstood something that Emily had sent me. But, um, I thought that the secretary of state that if, if we intend to use numbers, um, they want them to be specific. Did I miss that?
I don't remember that.
Okay.
Uh, advice from the secretary of state.
Hmm. Okay.
I, I have a question to the discussion. There, there are two flyers here and it hadn't been clear to me from comments being made, which version or which, uh, people were talking about it.
Not clear to me as well.
So it'd be helpful when you're making comments, say, is this the first or the second flyer?
Yeah, I, I was working with one that seemed to have Emily's, uh, notations on it. Notations on it. I wrote that with the second and most recent.
So which one are you proposing to use? Or are you proposing to use both of them?
Talking to me?
Yeah.
What we discussed, and I think it was the 15th, was to do some sort of a brochure. And I backed off of that once I realized what it would be like to try to assemble and do all those kinds of things. Just turned it into a flyer. That was the information regarding City Hall. And then the other one. Um, I put together factual information. Because to try to address what folks were saying that the city is not being forthcoming about how we will spend the funds. And so. It's, you know, it's, it's in there now. It's a short little, little piece, but. That, and that is what I believe I've heard from council. As far as, well, how the funds would be spent. So they really are two different. Things, Mike.
Yep. I was just saying that people were discussing it. It wasn't always clear which.
No, actually, that's good because I, I apologize. I, I had just, just off the first one thinking it was. The one that Emily had fixed. So I didn't even read the first one. Sorry.
You didn't read the first one? Oh, you're, okay. So you were talking about the second one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Emily, poor Emily has spent a lot of time fixing my stuff.
Has Emily gone through both?
Yeah, I think if you ask her.
Yes.
All right.
And I think. From a timing standpoint, even some suggestions. I mean, do you want to see pictures? Do you want the Rob? Do you want pictures of downtown? You know, anything like that for cover. And then we can work with Emily on a title. And then we can send the whole thing because that's, I think that's what the Secretary of State wants. And. So that would allow us to go ahead and do that.
Well, we kind of have our. Logo or image for Cannon Beach documents. Seems like that ought to be the cover. So it looks official. They know it's coming from the city. And not something that looks like a travel brochure.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's blank space on the third page. You want to take a picture of City Hall.
What about a virtual tour that we could offer on the website?
Anybody see Rusty Heat kind of one?
Is that something that's incredibly time consuming to do?
No, we could do it with like a GoPro camera or something.
I'm not asking for, you know, huge production value, but. I just think it would be an opportunity to possibly have graphics on it. And then also maybe have the opportunity, you know, to state our case and do it in a, in a very factual manner.
Robin, you've arranged for virtual tours of homes, haven't you? Is there somebody local that knows to do that and understands how to do it?
Don Frank would do it. Well, I don't know what his schedule is, but. Yeah, he could do that.
Who's that?
Don Frank.
Is he a photographer?
Yep.
I'm not saying Rusty couldn't, but.
You mean to take a photo? Is that what you're saying?
To take a tour.
I get one of here.
Yeah. And direct them with the flyer, direct them to the website for a virtual tour of the City Hall.
I think it might be a way for more people to actually do it. I, I have a feeling that, you know, it's, as things are progressing. That people would be quite reluctant to. Come here. For the tour.
Look, the problem with that is. Photographs and those videos make every house I've ever seen look much nicer than it really is.
Not necessarily. To have them clean it up. So, yeah, it shows you what it is.
And Donna do a good job. He's a great photographer.
I just think it has security issues, but. I'd of course defer to. I would think it would not be broken up where it's not like a tour or a layout and that type of stuff, but. I think it's something we could look into.
And I wouldn't have to wait for the approval and clearance of our written documents.
Emily, would something like that need to be run by the. Secretary of State?
Uh, I think that. It, it could definitely be done in a way that it does not need to be run by the Secretary of State. And I'd be happy to review any. Virtual tour video that you generate and I'd be comfortable. You know, yeah.
And I think we would appreciate some parameters. Uh, from you in the beginning, so we don't take missteps.
Sure, no problem.
I think that's a good idea.
Last week I did email the Secretary of State and they said it's taking about five business days, but also as it gets closer to the. Election, they'll get more submissions. So they did say the sooner the better.
Well, you know, I can take a look at these tomorrow and get them to you by tomorrow afternoon. I have a meeting at noon. That won't take an hour, so I, I, I can get them to you tomorrow afternoon.
And we're working with Andrew Tonry because Andrew's now in H R A P and. He can put together covers. And. I assume like Mike, you said kind of our logo for. City Cannon Beach stuff. And then. We can put the date. Can we put the date of the referral?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah.
That's a question I'd have to research and we can ask the Secretary of State also.
Yeah, okay.
It's odd that you wouldn't be able to tell people when the.
When the vote is?
The vote is, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, you see on one of the things I put together, it said, be sure to cast your vote on November 2nd and the November 2nd referral. I think Emily had some heartburn with that.
Probably. Could have been worded differently.
The very first sentence of the second. Flyer says on November 2nd, a 5% tax on. Factual.
Yes.
Yes.
Just for interest, and we've got whatever the city seal and those kinds of things are. Would you want to have like a picture or two? On it and the, on the cover side?
Probably as long as the Secretary of State approves it.
Yeah.
Yeah, catch people's eyes. We can look at it.
Nothing, not trying to fill all this space, but just something that. Okay, all right, sure.
Yeah, because they're not, they're just, they're not going to just retype. They're going to be drawn in by photos.
Then with the exception on the prepared food tax discussion. I will take out the be sure to cash your vote or whatever it says. And then we'll give both of these in Word version to Nancy. And then. I mean, I'm, I'm very comfortable, but would we? Everybody would be willing to go with what Nancy's versions are to keep things moving?
As long as it passes.
Sure, yeah, you'll go back. Okay. And then whatever we send. To the Secretary of State's office will send to council.
I'm not going to be changing any. I'm not going to rearrange any paragraphs or anything like that. All I'm doing is just tightening up the sentences that are there. Not going to add anything or subtract any facts.
What I would do is put a little space between paragraphs, make it a little more readable. Think some of those kinds of. Even if it takes an extra page, just spread it out because it is kind of.
It's tight. It's tight. And what the main thought was, can we get this on a page so that we can? Kind of do a three plier or whatever you call them. So. Again, ask Andrew to kind of play with it to. Because we, we have a lot of room that's going to be blank. And so we can try to go ahead and just maybe, you know, put it over on the back of a page or something.
Yeah, I see this, the more value of this is being on the website and I think the. Having it hand out is fine. I think what the committee is doing. Support group. Probably going to be more of an effective. Marketing tool. This is just for information. So I don't see this being necessarily a. Splash piece.
And I think sending it out is fine. I just, I guess I'm a little concerned about overload with what the support committee is doing and then. What the city is doing, the city needs to get its information out. So I, I'd say, yeah, go ahead and. Mail it out. But. It would be nice if the support committee would refer people to the website for information as well. And I. Think most of their flyers are done. And I don't think they have done that on their flyers. But. Yeah, so I think. I just don't want it to be so overloaded. People are going to go.
Okay. If that topic is covered, do we have any other? Questions about the City Hall project we need to bring up?
I mean, other than the vote?
I did have a question about. If we could be briefly updated. Everything went through the Secretary of State's office for the ballot title. Nothing was challenged. Correct?
That is correct.
And was a, a copy of the text that's going to appear on the ballot sent out to us at all yet?
Can we make sure that that? Happens.
I can send you guys a copy of what we filed with the county.
That would be, that would be.
And I'll actually download the copy that's on the county website because it's stamped with the county stamp on it and I'll send that out.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thanks. That's all I had on that issue.
Just curious because I've, you know, I've heard some comments and again, the. I don't have a lot of discussions, but every one of them has been. We don't know what you're doing with the City Hall. I can't spend that much money without knowing what we're doing. That's the total of. A handful of discussions that I've run into. Who I would call long-term residents. Especially ones who are quite vocal about trust. Which I found. Interesting. Somewhat cut me off guard. So I think. The more that we can start. Or continue to clarify. We don't have to go into a whole lot of detail. The hall project, but it sure would be nice to start leveling out the parameters that we expect. So. You know, being able to say that, no, it's not going to be a three-story. Pretty easy to say that right now, but that's the kind of thing I'm saying. People are actually envisioning. What they saw in the program, big square box. So that's where you have to start discussing openly about how our. Not, not the exact criteria, but our goals for the criteria towards design. Now size is in the discussion, but. Size is relative and a lot of people think. When they saw the bubbles on the bubble diagram and the program. There's no reference to size. It just looked really big on the page. So that's what they see.
I think what they see is what they're going to get.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, and it's, it's not that we would. Never do a cube.
Yeah, I know that. It's just hard to translate that to some folks who are not design oriented. Are very leery about whatever. Any government does, not just us.
And it is hard to go from a program to a design in somebody's head. Once you've seen the program, until you see the design. Program is a design.
I think, I think we've had a discussion and I think everybody's pretty much agreed that. They want it to look like a building in Cannon Beach, not a building in downtown Portland, for instance, but something that fits in with. The atmosphere and the ambiance of Cannon Beach. I think, I think we all agree with that.
And again, I agree that we agreed.
Yeah.
But we say it over.
Until you actually have an architectural rendering, some people still won't get it.
Yep.
Always.
Yeah, I guess at that point. We are here, I think, to really confirm. The fact that we've chosen this site. And. Anything that happens in the future. Our situations can change, but at this moment. Through all of the discussion and all of the. Back and forth that we've done over several sites. And I'm saying this not just from this council, but from a whole set of committees that I've been on, plus planning commission. Looking for places within this community where we can develop. A, the school, B, City Hall, and also emergency stuff. Here we are. We've come back to this one. Place having. I'm not going to say the least problems. But probably the best problem. Sort of your second. Worst, second worst choice, yeah. The, the only iteration or the only aspect that is going to be the biggest hurdle. Overcome is the, the fact that it's ending in an D S O for the big one. And I just want to get this out because again, we're public. Yes. This isn't a bad place for the big one. But the big one is the least. Possible event. Guess if you go to Vegas or Reno and you start gambling. You don't gamble on the most pop, the least possible event to happen. I'm not a gambler, obviously. There are so many other things that. This facility in this location. Is superb for. Not rambling. I think we need a motion.
Well, I move that the council approve the location for the new City Hall. In this present location. I don't know if we want to say something to the east of this. Building.
And to add the police station.
And the police station. Or City Hall Police Station. To the, to the Gower Street location. To the end, to the Gower Street location.
Can I?
East Gower Street location.
I was going to say, yeah, just thank everybody's talking about east. And um, so I appreciate you putting that in.
I second that.
Comments on that? Jennifer?
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Wissley.
Yes.
Council Olkaby.
Yes.
Council President Bennetfield.
Yes.
Mayor Steinbaum.
Yes. Okay. So we have a, at least a honest spot. Does that go to your order?
Um, I had one thing I wanted to ask. Um, I called the City of Astoria. I called the City of Seaside. And I called the City of Warrenton and they are all having uh, public meetings at this time. And I'm hoping that soon we'll be able to do that too because um. I think it's very unfortunate to just be a closed room like this and not have the public input. Especially right now.
Um, what are they doing different than what we're doing? Are they just allowing people to come in?
They are. And Seaside, what they've done is they have marked, I think she said the capacity, you could maybe correct me. Um, is seventy-five people and they're allowing twenty-five people in. They, and the gal said, you know, we had a really big um, uh, concern for people, which was hood to coast. And so people had to stand outside and wait their turn to come in. Is that right, Jason? Pretty much. Yeah, so that's what they're doing there. They're limiting it, the capacity seventy-five, they're allowing twenty-five. And they're taking their chairs and um, removing the ones uh, that people shouldn't sit in so that there's plenty of room. And then Astoria said they are, I didn't get into the detail like that. With Warrenton or Astoria, but Seaside was really helpful that way. So I was hoping maybe we could consider a similar thing.
If you all feel comfortable with it, we can make that change. I think that when we initiated it, the um, the Delta variant was climbing. More, much more quickly and more prevalent than what it is now. So we can um, make those kind of adjustments. So we had.
I was just reading Rick's um, last sit, yep. This past month marked the deadliest month since the pandemic started in Platte County. It's fourteen fatalities, five hundred and two COVID positive cases in the past thirty-two days. It seems like it's the time to open up. On, leave it to the.
We, when we made the move. Idea is that um, we were trying to limit the spread. And also because each of our departments is so small. Um, you have one person from the wastewater department test positive. And then you got two people that are in, you know, uh, quarantine and then you don't have a department. So we're trying to uh, you know, do those kind of limitations. And uh, and I had not seen that, so uh. I think it might be good. Maybe by um. Of the October meetings next week.
Do you know if Seaside is requiring proof of vaccination?
I didn't ask that question.
I know the Coaster Theater is opening up next Friday and we're requiring proof of vaccination. And um, masks and anybody who doesn't wear a mask, even for a second.
She did say everyone needed to have a mask, yeah.
And, but they're spacing it, they're spacing major, major spaces behind us. Um, groups, so that's what, but the coaster is a lot bigger than the city.
I bet they have a lot better air circulation than we have in here.
We, we do have a better HVAC there, I think, yeah. We just installed it about three years ago.
Do you know about the vaccination part, Jason?
What about it?
Uh, for allowing people into the Seaside City Hall.
I don't know that they're allowing that or that they're requiring that.
Okay.
The other concern I have about that is our chambers proximity to the rest of, of the um, the hall. And I don't know if that's a concern for Seaside, Astoria and Warrenton, but it's a concern for me. I think we've done a very good job of keeping our employees as safe as they can be. Up to this point, I'm not saying we're headed in a wrong direction, but I'd certainly be, certainly be reluctant to do something that puts them in more danger.
We can continue to monitor the situation and then maybe in a couple of weeks, maybe by November, we can make the change back.
First, how quick, how much time would it take to, we have to just post it? So a couple of days. If we made a, what I was thinking is if we made a decision tonight, what we want to do on the fifth and then a decision on the fifth, what we would do one on the twelfth. And then we'll have time after that, but. I'm, I'm thinking we need to stay safe and stay secure, but also judge the situation as we go. So I would stay, stay locked down for the next week. Next week, we'll see what would feel like for the fall.
Mm-hmm.
I uh, I know what other towns and cities are doing. Um, I also know that Manzanita has been locked up. They didn't ever really open.
But they had to change, they're not even in their city hall.
They don't have a city hall.
And I did talk to Manzanita and, but I didn't bring it up because I didn't know how relevant it was since they are having no public anything there. Because they're in a different location.
But they've also, for some weird reason, been able to really get their Zoom meetings working. Uh, they are averaging thirty to forty people per meeting.
Yeah, but they've had a lot of controversy there too.
Yeah, you know, so.
It's not just.
But anyhow, it's, I think we'll just do our own thing and let's, let's judge the situation as we go. Hopefully by November, we'll be able to really uh, have some open meeting. And it's possible that we'll have something later this month or that, October yet? No, later in October. Uh, for a special meeting if we need it. We'll see. Um. I had something now, I forgot it. It's a good in the order, everybody else. Yes, it wasn't important. That's it then, we are returned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.